We'll start back.
Uh huh.
First road in terms of the right.
Call or meeting back to order, we didn't just look at online intensity, but that's okay. Next item is item 12, the folks here again on the inventory, so I'm not sure what that meant, Ron is inventory?
The Ron is, yeah.
Okay.
Is Mr. Thatcher not coming?
No.
Okay, so we'll do him in January?
Uh, I don't know, I sent him a message and he said he doesn't have it, so I'm not sure. But, yeah, item 11 has been, uh, back along here. So, item 12, the lead folks, welcome back.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, this, I guess this is just to go back over, I believe it's two meetings back, that, um, John Bolinka came over and presented this before, um, going through, these are basically routes that have been identified by our central office as, um, I guess, roads in the system, in our secondary system of maintenance that, um, need to be, actions taken to remove them because they haven't been maintained in over twenty years or they're non-existent, different things. So, they're essentially paper routes, um, that require action by the board to, um, either remove them, and the options are either doing a discontinuance or an abandonment of those routes, so, and, and I believe there were, um, five, two seconds, go ahead.
You have that in your packet?
Yeah.
If there's an email plus the pictures, it's on the screen.
Yeah, so, um, with that, I mean, there's, um, I'm here to answer any questions, I think, um, I guess the intent today is to kind of go through that and then later on, depending on how the board wishes to go with each of these, we'll help hold a public hearing to actually take formal action on them.
There's one thing that I need to bring up, after the last meeting.
Okay.
Uh, I had a caller too on, uh, the Route 667, which is off of 666.
Okay.
Just outside of Gate City, you turn back, and, uh, the property owner was Mary Allison Pleland, and I guess if she had known that you've been here today, she would probably be here because she wanted to be. Uh, she honored a property in question, and Eddie Richmond and his family, um, the rest of it, probably just two property owners other than what goes over toward Copper Creek. But, the situation is that that road is the Kentucky Trace. And let me, if you allow me, let me read just a little here about the Kentucky Trace. Jeremiah Wolssey, W-O-L-S-E-Y, was born in Washington County, Virginia, in seventeen eighty-one, moved to Scott County, which was in Russell County at that time. He built a cabin near present day Gate City, Virginia, on the route of immigrants to Kentucky. The route, our Kentucky Trace, ran through Big Moxon Gap, following Red Hill Branch, which is up Red Hill Road, over Moxon Ridge, near the old Red Hill Meeting House, to Copper Creek, near Flower, R, Flower, F-L-O-U-R, R-F-L-O-W-E-R, Branch, and then up Flower Branch to the top of Copper Ridge in points west. This trace appears to follow the routes of state, Route 666 to 667, and passes next to the Jeffries family graveyard, uh, located on Copper Creek Bluff shortly before crossing Copper Creek. Jeremiah built the Jeffries home on this property in eighteen oh seven. That cabin is still standing on this road. And this family, one time before, VDOT, uh, had a public hearing and planned on discontinuing it or dropping it, and the family showed up and, and they rescinded, VDOT rescinded it. Now, this Jeffries home, I don't know the date of the Kilgore Port House, but this is one, probably one of two of the oldest homes in Scott County. They would like for this road to remain on the record for historical research purposes and, uh, the historical significance and, and relevance of it. I, I've looked at this, the, both, I've looked at both, both the abandonment, and I don't, I don't know that we should abandon any road, or discontinuance, and I don't even think the discontinuance would apply to this road simply because of its, its value to Scott County, its historical significance. And the cabin is in great shape, the owners tell me that they're going to refurbish the cabin, I could go up there and live in it now, but it is on the Kentucky Trace, which is 667, so, I, I would hope that it would remain on the records for that purpose.
Right, and, and just to clarify, if, if, if you do a discontinuance, the right-of-way is still there, it doesn't go away, it actually reverts to the county. Um, but, for the, um, actual, you know, the actual road itself, um, and John put this together, um, noting, you know, that, that's where our current end of state maintenance is, um, is, is what's indicated there, so, um, beyond that, it's not been maintained, um, in over twenty years, um, and, and it's no longer meets that, um, public, um, requirement as far as the, the being able to serve residents or anything like that, it has to meet a public need. So, that, that's why it's been identified, and though, and what I try to do is, is also give some options of where, um, and that's kind of the red markups that I put in there, it's like, you could opt to do abandonments on some of these instead of just discontinuance, if the county did want to retain the right-of-way, um, but that, that's, that's where this one is, so, um, I mean, and a lot of what you're talking about, I, I mean, um, I would imagine maybe the county would want to just do a discontinuance as a, as opposed to a full abandonment through that section. Um, and, and once again, that was, um, one of the things that we suggested to, is, um, the county may wish to do that also, um, if, for example, there's an opportunity to have like, uh, like this one has a river ford, I don't know if it ends up being a viable launch for tubing or something like that, you know, sort of thing, um, so it, it ties into all of that as well.
I think their concern was that it would be completely wiped out of the system, no record of it with discontinuance.
Uh, it would, it would be, there would be a record, um, whenever we do this, this, um, highway system change process, that gets archived in our central office, so it would actually show all of this documentation and the discontinuance, so if, uh, 'cause we often get questions about right-of-way like that, and sometimes I'm having to go back to central office and ask them, and, and then they'll pull up the old records that show where we abandoned or discontinued, um, an old right-of-way.
So, it would be in the archives if the cabin was restored and, and used as, as Kilgore Port House is on Highway, uh, it's on Highway.
Um, I don't.
It would be in the archives.
Well, any, any action that's taken on this, like, so if we, if, if the board does a discontinuance, then that goes on record with VDOT and Central Office.
Okay.
And, and any of these, the sketches and things are part of that, um, assembled.
Okay. Is that the end of Red Hill Road up there?
Um.
At six sixty-six.
Red Hill Road, Danny.
Yeah, I said it there, I said Red Hill Road.
It's at the bottom.
Yeah.
That goes.
I said, I said Red Hill Road up there, no? That's actually Copper Creek then, isn't it?
No, no, you're saying right then, right, which goes down Copper Creek, down at the bottom of the picture.
Right here, yeah.
Yeah, that's Red Hill.
But that's Copper Creek instead of the river, right?
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think all of these, it said river fords are actually creeks, there are places you could probably jump across them, so. Uh, I, I had several calls up, up my area, and they, they're not for it, uh, for different reasons, but, uh, yeah, now, if, if we decide to discontinue, that's when it goes back to the county?
Yes, the right-of-way is retained by the county ownership for.
What, what would be the responsibilities of the county if we took possession of it? Do we know that?
Um, and that's, I would probably defer to, as far as that's, that's legal rights and stuff, so I'm not an attorney, so I can only say one way or another.
I don't know. I'd have to look at that.
On this, uh, Route 672, which is, one side is Ponder, joins Ponderosa, and the other side is Snowflake Road, the lady that lives on this road, she called me and she said that, uh, the state is still graveling that road, when she calls them, they come and gravel part of that road. Now, the lower end of it, which joins Snowflake, I don't think anything's been done to it, but the upper part that joins Ponderosa, they're still evidently, from what she says, they're keeping that road gravelled out so far, she lives out that road, is what she said now. Uh, she talked to me about it, and she does not want it changed.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah.
Is that the one you talked?
Yeah, there's been several people call about that one. I don't know, I guess the, you know, it, right, right there, in that, in the curve, in that sharp curve, it looks like that they, maybe that's what they're graveling, I don't, I've not been all the way through it, but.
I don't think you can get all the way through it now, I don't think.
No, and, and that's what John had, had indicated, part of it, you, you can't even readily identify that there's a road bed on the ground.
I used to go three years ago, uh, riding horses, but, uh.
Actually, that mobile home is second, where you cannot get around it. Mobile home's pretty close right on the right.
She says they still put gravel on it, uh, when she calls them, the state does, I don't, I don't know, but, I know the lower end is pretty well.
Your red dots are, that's nothing, I mean, you can't tell it's road there.
Yeah, right.
The curve.
It goes out there, walk, maybe halfway, that's kept up or something, from the Ponderosa side, and then from a Snowflake side, it's just more or less nothing that, right?
Yeah, you can't access it for that mobile home, there's an outfield and there are car ports.
Yeah. Is there a way you could, uh, maybe go away with the lower part and keep the upper part?
Would, would you just be discontinuing or whatever, we decided the, the red part and not, not?
Yeah, let me, let me clarify, with, um, the markings up here, there's, um, John put this, um, these sketches together, and the little dashed line is what he was recommending for discontinuance. The red highlights, those are the ones where I said, these are sections that you could, you could, you could actually abandon and not landlock somebody, which is, that's the main reason why we would recommend doing a discontinuance instead of an abandonment, is to not landlock properties. Um, but, that, that was, that was, I was just presenting that as an option if the board wanted to pursue any of the aband, abandonments as opposed to discontinuances.
Well, I'm kind of thought, not abandoning it, uh, into the discontinuance, what's the advantage of VDOT to do to a discontinuance or abandonment, why, why do they want to do this?
So, so the, the discontinuances, um, if, if the board goes with, uh, just doing the discontinuance, it will, it will actually make it simpler to go completely that way, um, and I, and I, like I said, that's why I think John had that initially, the, the things that I've encountered with abandoned right-of-way is, sometimes you have questions, uh, and get into property owner disputes and stuff, in the past we've seen, if, if somebody, if, if they question whether there is, so if you actually abandon the right-of-way, then there's not a question of where was the actual discontinued right-of-way, because a lot of these were taken in with the Barrett Act, we don't have any deep description of the road, it's physically where the road is, is, is basically how it's, um, you know, described in a lot of these, so, um, I think it's more of a, from that perspective, it's, it's more kind of a property issue with the individual owners sometimes that might come up.
Well, the VDOT's already discontinued maintenance on something like this, they're not doing anything, let's say, or discontinued maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's basically why they, they, Central Office had, had initiated a lot of these, where just, they, they're physically not being maintained, and they haven't been in over twenty years, and that's, that's why they're, um, trying to get these actually, um, resolved in the system, um, to take formal action on them.
Well, according to her, red dot is still maintained, part of this.
Part of it, it's probably what's not highlighted, that red part, he's got highlighted there, is what he's talking about, discontinuing, the other part, we still, that still be, be the same road number, Route 664, or is that what it is?
Six seventy-two.
That one, you did.
Six seventy-two.
Yeah, I think it's six seventy-two, I'm sorry, I said it by now, but, anyway.
Now, it, it would be, um, the discontinuance would be all of the dashed, or line area.
John, you're talking about the red dashes or the orange?
The orange and the red, um, the red is a section that you could abandon, if you wanted to abandon it completely, um, the, the dash would be the discontinuance, so it would go from Route 671 in that curve up, up to where the end of that ties into, uh, six seventy-two.
So, basically, if we, this, this continues something, it just falls back on the county, and everything else, that's the same?
Yeah, it, it just, it, it's removed from VDOT's system of maintenance officially.
In other words, if, if somebody want to go down through that road, and, and let's say we discontinued it, they could still go down through there?
It's still a total right-of-way.
Oh, okay, it's still a problem.
Yeah, and, and that's usually why we do, um, the instances, 'cause VDOT, by policy, um, they prefer that we do an abandonment where possible, but, in cases where we do have, um, a landlocking or something like that, then we would, we, uh, discontinuances use to still maintain access to the property.
So, it, it'd be open to all public, I mean, you wouldn't be able, I mean, it wouldn't matter if you owned land down that or not, anybody, like Daryl said, if you want to ride a horse down through there, you could ride it, no matter what?
Yeah, although, most people probably wouldn't.
Well, that's just, yeah.
But your decision today's not final in concrete, because they have to have the public hearing.
Right, we have to hold a public hearing, yeah, and that's what, uh, we wanted to get input today about, you know, which, do you want to pursue abandonment with any of the sections, do you want to do all discontinuance, 'cause that, that affects what type of public hearing that we hold, if it's just discontinuance, we go one route, if it's a combination, we go another route.
Obviously, do the discontinuance, and then we have a public hearing, maybe the folks will come, and then we can deal with it then, but I, I mean, as far as abandonment, I'm not so sure about that, the discontinuance, I mean, I can say where it might, it might be, something you want to look at, but if you have to have it today, we can do that today, but the board here, they can stop what you want to do, discontinuing or abandoning.
And, and if, if that's what the board wishes, then we'll proceed with doing it, um, all as discontinuances for all purposes.
Then we have the public hearing, the folks, it's going to be affected by it, hopefully they'll come and.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Yeah.
So, you had recommended 667 be abandoned, but it would be included in the discontinuance.
Yes, okay.
With the public hearing, it's great.
Yeah, and I believe, if I remember right, John had originally said, his recommendation was going everything discontinuance.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that, that was what was originally presented, I was just also presenting an option, if the board wished to do abandonments, there could be certain sections that could be, but.
On, on, first on that, where I live, there used to be a county road behind my house in Long Clutch River, but I have an old deed called the New Grady Road, which is the one we use now, Route 72, but that old road bed's still there, but it's, it's, I guess it reverted back to the onerous, my deed cost, it's there as mine, so, that situation.
Um, it, if, if you.
I'm looking at nineteen thirty, so.
Okay, well, yeah, well, I mean, that's, if you sent me the information, I can have it researched with Central Office and, and kind of, you know, like I said, that's, uh, 'cause I, I do get those questions frequently about, uh, abandoned right-of-way or discontinued right-of-way, and we can do a Central Office archive search to look it up, and that, that's
I don't want to look it up, I'm afraid I might not.
Yeah.
All right.
And I think John Bolinka said, if you discontinue, there's no legal obligation for the county to physically maintain.
Right.
You just maintain the right to abandon later.
Right.
Is the only legal.
Your thoughts on deciding to do the discontinuance rather than abandonment, I mean, do you see that might be?
I think that's the only good.
Okay, I do too. Well, if that's something we need to vote on today, to decide to do that, I thought I saw a bit more to make sure. Any other, was any other besides these, Route 664, 67, 667 and 672?
These are all the ones presented as a part of this action.
Yeah.
But it's still not a done deal.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is just direction for what.
To the board, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh, well, that, spent a lot more time on this discussion, pretty good, do we have a motion to do the contin, discontinuance rather than the abandonment, we have a motion to do that on 664, 667, 675?
I'll make that motion.
There's five of them.
Oh, there's five?
Yeah.
Well, I looked, I didn't see them.
You got Route 664, 667, 669, 675, 672.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you write those up for Bill, Lieutenant?
Yeah, and there's a, I think there's a, a location map at the very bottom, at the very end of the document, last page of it, that has all the locations, uh, these are all kind of, I guess, north, northeast of, of Gate City area.
Well, one more thing, sorry, like Daryl was talking about, they said he got a call about that you all had, had maybe brought some rag, or to, to the, whatever it was, 672, up, up Ponderosa, to 672 there, is that? Would that be, and you're all, I mean, could we keep doing that, I, we, I'm not aware of it, but.
No, no, that's, if it's outside of state meetings, we shouldn't.
Yeah.
That's what, we're looking to it, I know already.
That's what the lady says, she says she calls them.
And it's possible, but.
And it is gravelled.
Yeah.
Because I was there.
Yeah.
I got chewed out real good, but.
Glad you. Yeah, I know. But if we, we'll do that, I mean, the five of them, like I said, and the discontinuing or abandonment, so, any other discussion on tonight, we'll put this to a vote, and we'll, and we'll give you options to do it, or we can go in one direction, go in.
Disagreement, go in.
Or do we have a motion to do that on, on those five routes?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Ricky has made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, this third second, any discussion? I'll vote, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so, go over there. All right, I thank you all for coming to listen to all this, they meant a lot.
Thank you.
So, anyway, appreciate you coming and sitting with us. Marty Mas, Miss Stacy. Our next item is the reassessment contract, uh, Ms. Arns.
The reassessment contract is on your tablet, um, it is with Wingate Appraisal Services, and the amount of $275,000. Do you have any questions about the contract, this is one that we approved by email.
Right.
Early on.
Two actually, about that, that it's included for the, after the reassessment for the, what am I trying to say?
Equalization.
Equalization, that'd be second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, did you make this again, something like this, not a year ago, but anyway, we did vote by email to give her approval and do this, do we need to make a formal approval of this today? All right, uh, you've seen it, you know what it's going to be, I'm, I'm just asking, it's something three hundred thousand usually, you know, we kept it down to that most, but you expect it to go up, you know, as time goes on. So, anyway, do we have a motion to approve this, uh, this contract with Wingate?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Trump.
Mr. Tipton made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Junior, second, any discussion? I'll vote, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then the professional appraiser approval, if you would, again, Ms. Arns.
I also got approval by email, before we didn't have the November meeting, um, to send a letter to the Department of Taxation regarding the letter to make Donald Thomas, the project supervisor for reassessment, to make him as the professional assessor for Scott County, and that letter has been sent to the Department of Taxation.
Yeah, will it still be approved at that?
Yes.
All right, you, uh, need approval, it's Donald Thomas, is that what you said?
Thomas. Donald Thomas.
Donald Thomas to be the, the appraiser for this, so, do we have a motion to approve this gentleman?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Turner made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Grubie, second, any discussion? I'll vote, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And they have already started the process, they were in the county on Monday, so, just to let the citizens know that they will have identification, and you'll know who they are, their vehicles have, um, signs on the doors that say Wingate Appraisal Services.
Freddie, do you think that we should maybe write something in the paper to let people know, or?
I think that would be good, we could do that.
Yeah, that's good, everyone asks for people.
And I think they were going to ask, did you do a letter for them saying that it was appraisal? Okay, good.
Yes, yes, I have been working with them to get everything that they need in order to get started.
And their vehicle description and tag number has been, uh, given to the Sheriff's Department and to E-911, so that if citizens do have, uh, concerns and call, then they can verify that's who it actually is.
All right, good.
That's good.
Glad to keep our folks informed, we need to do that, and, Dick, thank you for coming to listen to all this today, so we appreciate you.
Well, I didn't know, I thought you might have some questions, I didn't know that, I just wanted to let you know that they are getting.
Come on up here, come on up here a second, I'll wait for that. We do appreciate you coming.
Yeah, I just, I thought you might have some questions, and I have been working with them to get everything set up, um, getting them access to the deeds and all that, and of course, they have a copy of our mail, so they have to be able to access our real estate data, so, we've got all that situated, and I think they're, you know, off to a good start, so, we're just hoping for a really good reassessment, crying for one.
It's probably going to have a lot more work y'all too, during all this too, if you did.
It always does, but, you know, it's just to be expected, it's part of it, and, you know, we have a lot of IRA people, but, you know, anytime you mention reassess, you know, people, um, actually think, you know, that their taxes are going to go with it, but.
Well, the big thing, it's required by law, it's not like something we choose to do, but it's, it's required by law, it's every six years we do this, and some places do it every year, uh, you can't do that, but we do it every six years, that's, that's a minimum that requires you to do.
But I have a really good feeling about Wingate, you know, we, we talk to them, and, you know, and Freddie's been in contact with them too, so, I, I have a, you know, they have a really good reputation, um, so, you know, we're just, you know, hoping for a good reassessment.
Well, you and the Travers both, there's going to be more work on you for, you know, for a while, I'm sure, get together, we got to pay you then.
Yeah, it's just, like I said, you know, it's to be expected, and we're just doing the best we can do, and.
All right, anybody have any questions for Commissioner Remington? Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you all.
How it's done, okay?
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's, like, his scans were good, and.
Good.
Yeah, so, I'm just trying to keep him at home.
Yeah.
Keep him away from.
Do that, be sure you do.
Yes.
I don't know from personal experience, you don't want to go through some of this is gone through.
No, right, but thank you, um, hope all of you have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
You too, thank you.
All right. Item fifteen is the letter of a request for bar access to sovereign, Ms. Arns, if you want to delve into that.
I had a request, um, to do a letter to VMA Old Bay Co. regarding, uh, the, the APPCO, which is Appalachian Power Steering Committee, and the solar group is wanting to send the letter, I don't know if you've reviewed it or not, um, so that there's not a cap on solar for school systems and for local governments, uh, right now, the way that it's set up, it is difficult, if the local government wanted to add solar to their buildings, or a school system wanted to add solar, so, uh, what the letter is asking for is, in the upcoming contract negotiation, if they would eliminate the arbitrarily low caps for schools and local governments for solar net metering, the cap is, if the cap is not eliminated, at least increase it to eighteen megawatts to reflect. to reflect the recent increase in state law for other Appalachian power company customers. To eliminate prohibitions on solar power purchase agreements for public authorities by ensuring, the contract language provides that a customer may own and operate or contract with other persons to own, operate a solar array or other eligible renewable energy generators. And it would allow municipalities to credit solar energy generated on one side of a location, such as a landfill, towards the bill of other non-continuous mutual municipality-owned facilities. This is called virtual net metering and so forth. So, I wanted to present the letter because it was requested that I do that. Just because, the letter has not been sent, it was waiting for your approval to see if it's something you were interested in doing. I was on a solar call, and Dean Lynch was on the call, and I sent him a spark about that, and he said, you know, the county did do the letter to include them a copy, and you can see at the bottom that Virginia Municipal League and Bayco General Council is included.
I think we should, I got a thing from APCO back, there's a push now to more wind and solar, and what I see in this, they're trying, they're, they can't eliminate fossil fuel, and President Obama said back earlier in his administration, electric rates are necessarily skyrocketing. When they, when they did the thing, coal, they stopped it, but the natural gas, they are against that now too. So, I don't know, we're, at the time, I've never seen nothing like it, but the sad part is, all those cars will be right back on the consumer. That's where it ends up at, and so, I don't know, it's, to abandon fossil fuel like the move seems to be going, you know, I don't know, there's some people that are not using their, their right thinking on this and my thoughts, but anybody got that, and they're wanting to, like, by 2050, some crazy stuff, lots of people in Manhattan, but your kids and grandkids sure will be to deal with it. And so, thank God we've got natural gas, which they didn't plan on that, I think, when they said that the World Cup happened, they went to natural gas, and I remember Sierra Club did a thing, and the natural gas people put it out there, beyond coal. That was their slogan, beyond coal. Well, that's beyond gas, they want to get beyond that. So, gas is burning clean, or clean burning, I guess, and cleaner than coal, of course, but anyway, if all the scrubs that they have, they can burn coal, now cleaner than ever have, ever. That power plant in near St. Paul, it's the cleanest one in the world. And you can't build another one like it now because of regulations, you can't, you can't do it, it's the cleanest one in the world. And you can't build another one like it because of regulations, it keeps coming down to stopping. But anyway, that one, that plant will probably, I would say it lasting another ten years, they'll do something to their, and like I said, they, it really is, it's a great asset to Wise County, you get about five million dollars a year in taxes off of it. Maybe more than that, it's gonna be a big hit, so if they ever shut that, that power plant down in Virginia City. Anyway, going back to this, we'll vote on doing this, I think we should, your thoughts? So, all we're asking is for access, so, and I don't, you know, to do that, and so, I don't see a thing wrong with it. If you're gonna do it, let's be, be a part of it, that's gonna happen.
Absolutely, yes.
With us or without us, so, anyway, entertain a motion for a letter supporting this.
So will Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Ricky, second, any discussion? All favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Arns. And the item sixteen, the personnel plan, it was pages there, that was highlighted and read some of the changes, and I hope you've had a chance to look at, page eight, sixty-four and seventy-four, is where the changes were. Ms. Caddell, do you wanna say anything about this, or do you need to?
I don't really need to, these are just changes required by the Virginia Human Rights Act that was passed earlier this year, so we're just updating the personnel plan to reflect that.
And that's part of, we need to do that, so, anyway, good job on doing what you did, and so, that a lot of talk about whatever we need to. Approve this personnel plan as presented.
All of you make the motion that we approve the plan as presented.
Mr. Krueger made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Miss Third, second, any discussion? All favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item seventeen is animal friendly license plates fund, and how much was in that? Seventy-five bucks or something?
Seventy-five.
Yeah, all right. Ms. Arns, you'll go ahead, we're discussing that.
In the past, this is something that we have, went ahead and gave those funds to the Scott County Humane Society, and for the new members, this is a fee that the Department of Motor Vehicles charges if you have the animal friendly license plate. So, it's a little bit less than it was last year, but seventy-five dollars looks like the amount in our letter.
So, do we have a motion to?
I'll make the motion, I believe.
Mr. Krueger made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second? Any discussion? All favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item eighteen was, my addition was gonna do that.
Yeah, so we'll do that when he gets his presentation.
What it is, is proclamation for Diane Anthony Quanliff, she's seven years with PSA, but they'll able to do that in January, that's okay. Item nineteen, the capital improvement committee, who served on that for last time?
I did.
I did too.
I'm trying to exempt, you can do it again if you want to, but I. And y'all met about maybe five, six, seven times or something, how many times y'all meet on that?
Yeah, that's probably better.
I would not serve on it.
Okay, we will let you, anyone else? Feels the need. If we're looking for a motion, I'll make, Mr. Ricky. And I don't mind, I don't mind serving on it, I don't mind.
I did it last year, I don't mind doing it again.
You want more than one?
I need two.
You have to be two. Okay.
Unless somebody else wants to do that.
I'll make the. Mr. Krueger, if she wants to do it, I mean, I'm. All right, Mr. Krueger and, 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 Mr. Ricky. Okay, I can point them to that, so y'all are pointed. You must have done a good job, because Ms. Arns is smiling, and she must enjoy your company. All right, you are pointed to, the thing about being on, they usually get exempted from being on the budget committee. So, anyway.
So, you're disappointed, no motion needed?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. Next item is bookkeeping, item twenty.
I've got that somewhere.
All right. Been going a while on, I can be y'all's favorite.
I found it's only one thing. Transfer forty-five hundred dollars from miscellaneous revenue reconciliation regional jail three-one dash one-eight-nine-zero-zero dash zero-zero-one-four and appropriate to county administrator office supplies one-two-one-one-zero dash six-zero-zero-one, deposited at the treasurer's office on eight-ten-twenty-twenty.
All right, need a motion to make future appropriations, as described by Ms. Arns.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Miss Third made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Herr, a second, any discussion? All favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is appointments, so, Miss Dana is here to do that, if you would, ma'am.
You have one appointment tonight to the comprehensive policy management team for apparent representative, and you have no applicants.
Do we have any nominations for this appointment? We'll carry it over the next time, hopefully, we get somebody to serve on that. All right, next item is, on appointments, is economic development, so, Miss Dana.
You have one applicant, Dennis Fritz, reapply for that.
Do we have any nominations for the EDA?
I'll nominate Mr. Fritz.
Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion, nominations cease and vote by acclamation.
All right. Mr. Tipton made a motion, that nominations cease, vote by acclamation, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second, any discussion? All favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, and so, he is approved. From what I hear, he does a really good job, so I'm glad he, he reapplying, and I bet he does a really good job with that. Part of Appalachia.
And the Part of Appalachia is trying to get their appointments in line with the code of Virginia, and to do that, Keith Wilson's term needs to be extended to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
What was his first name?
Keith Wilson, he is Key.
Key.
Okay, do two-twenty-two for twelve-twenty-two, December?
December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, so, we need to vote to extend that term, is that correct? All right, all right, we can do that, so, Mr. Wilson will serve until twelfth, or one-twenty-two. Do we have a motion to extend his term?
I'll move.
Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Ricky, second, any discussion? All favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item twenty-two, Ms. Kettler. I told you we can move quick once I got started.
Yeah. I thought people came in.
I know.
I just have one thing to keep it moving along. The sheriff and the condo's attorney is asking that we update current ordinance, the ordinance authorizing and imposing jail processing fee on persons convicted and admitted to jail. They wanted updated just to reflect the regional jail rather than the Scott County jail and ensure that both the district court and the circuit courts are imposing the fee, the fee's twenty-five dollars, that's the most it can be by code. So, it's just kind of housekeeping to keep that ordinance up to date, and if y'all wish, we can have a public hearing in January.
Need to authorize you to advertise the credit. But we need to authorize Ms. Kettler to advertise that ordinance, do we have a motion to do that?
Still moving, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ricky made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Second, any discussion? All favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have, unless you have a question.
The, the two homes on the west end of town, they got settled, right?
Yes, got settled.
And if y'all don't know, they want us to amend some, an ordinance or two on this, I don't think we should, you had some unique situation there on that, so I don't think we should amend an ordinance just to make it.
Convenient.
Convenient for one incident, so I think the ordinance we have in place is what needs to be, and so, anyway.
It's settled for now, that may come back, for their first days, I think it's taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is item thirteen, county administrator, his client is already introduced, Ms. Arns.
First, we'll do the November claims, they're the light green that's in your folder. The general fund balance was six million, three hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Early claims for the month was forty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars and forty-one cents. Total claims, one million, one hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. And some of the larger items were advanced disposal, thirty-nine thousand, four thirty-four, twenty-nine for September. Twenty-nine thousand dollars for two thousand eight Peterbilt front-load packer truck to Bonds Auto Sales. A twenty-twenty Durango for the sheriff's office to Dominion of Bedford, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. Reimbursement to Deadfield Fire and Rescue, that was for aid Lucas devices, that was CARESAC money for all county rescue squads that just funneled through Deadfield, they had the quote, under twenty-five thousand dollars and sixty-four cents. Fort Blackmore Volunteer Fire Department, their contribution for the year, thirty-eight thousand, two fourteen, fourteen. Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority, second quarter for fiscal year twenty-one, five hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents. And Scott County Life Saving Crew, thirty-five thousand, one hundred fifty dollars for second, that's their second payment for this fiscal year. And Scott County Health Department, second quarter, sixty-two thousand, seven hundred three dollars and fifty cents. That was just some of the bigger claims. So, those were for November.
Pretty pay up, or wrong.
Yeah, that was a few months.
Yeah. That jail thing, you wanna know how many prisons we have now that should be moved up to campus? D O C should be taking a look, how many is there?
In the forties. I'm not saying.
That number keeps going up.
We're at two-seventeen.
Four.
Two-seventeen, that was as of Monday.
Did we hear anything about back letter we sent to Tryba?
Senator Pelear and delegate Kilgore did a combined letter to the governor. But I'm not, and they sent me a copy of the letter, but I haven't had any other responses besides that.
Is there anything we can do that, I mean, is there, is force pressure on them to do something, forty-some people? My goodness, that's, I mean, that's costing us probably three hundred fifty thousand a year to keep them in there.
Right now, if we ended today, our reconciliation would be seven hundred thousand dollars, that were that much of our budget.
But see, although, I mean, the amount, I remember, it was stolen a fifth of us, and one time it was twenty-nine, and we got some relief, and they, they started moving them out.
They're not moving them because of COVID, that's why they're not being moved.
You know, if we got room for them, that's fine, if they reimburse, you know.
Well, we ask even about CARESAC money, you know, and that, that's not an eligible expense, which doesn't make sense to me because that is increasing a cost, because it's COVID, directly COVID related.
Well, why do they think we can have the COVID there that they can? I mean, that makes no sense to me, but I know their logic is they're saving money, their budget looks good. But ours looks like something I don't wanna say. But, I don't know, it's just, it makes you wanna pull your hair out, especially with the reassessment coming, and we try to make the numbers, you know, balance here, and then you have this cost that you cannot do anything about, but I still think that for some way, the counties, the regional jail board, some other counties and stuff, they think we can get them together with them and file a lawsuit against D O C. You know, become, make them follow their rules, that's all we're asking. It's your rules, but just in place, they changed the rules in two thousand and ten, and keep them two years instead of one year, and so, they're the ones that changed the rules, and then they don't even live with their own rules, they change it to.
Or at least pay the full amount.
Yeah.
To keep them at the regional jail, instead of the twelve dollars, if they're your responsible inmate, pay the full amount.
I don't know, it's just the.
We don't get a whole one to budget to come bill?
I don't. At least, you know, delegate Kilgore, Senator Pelear, they're, they're on board, but their hands are tied too, unless somebody at Department of Corrections, their board, that says, you know, we're really, and it's not just us, I'm sure it's over the whole state that's doing this. So, they're saving hundreds of millions.
Mr. Poe at Lee County, he has a pretty big number as well, over two years. So, it's other locality's concerns too, it's not just us.
We already get twelve dollars a day for.
For state responsible inmates.
Do we have federal prisons there too, I know we get reimbursed from the federal real good, but.
I don't know what that number is, but usually we do have some federal, and Bristol City.
Right. All righty, but anyway, let's pay bills. We have a motion, do we do, are we doing November, end of December, or December?
Doing December.
Okay, November first, with, it'll be the first one we do, need a motion to pay these bills.
I'll make them, Mr. Chairman, please November bill.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ricky, second? Any discussion? All favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. We'll do December night.
Yeah, this is the bright green that's in your folder. The general, general fund balance after claims, ten million, six hundred five thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents. You can see from your comparison chart, we're pretty much at the same spot we've been the last several years, those are very close. Some of the larger claims this month, advanced disposal, thirty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars and nineteen cents for October. Dominion of Bedford, it was a different Durango, twenty-eight thousand, seven twenty-eight. Deadfield Fire and Rescue contribution. Duffield Fire and Rescue contribution, $78,514.14. Quickway Construction, $27,000 for a post deal building. That was CARESAC money. Nicholsville Volunteer Fire Department, $38,214.14. That's their contribution for this year. And Scott County Firefighters, $126,102.2. And Spirit Bay Trails got their yearly contribution, $14,000. Early claims, $52,934.18. And total claims for the month, $564,491.8. So, much lower.
Yeah, that is. We're about a million dollars better off than we were in 2000, just give it 2009, 10. But about $200,000 less more worth its time last year, so. End discussion on the paying the bills. Do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion. We pay the bills for December.
Mr. Kedley made a motion. Do we have a second? End discussion. All fair and open say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Anything, Ms. Williams?
I do have a couple things. You should have an email from myself and a resolution in your packet. And it is where V F P did a agreement with the county to receive funds for so many jobs. And it's the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund. The grant was originally for $100,000. And they have not met the number of jobs needed. So, V F P has agreed to pay back that amount. And that's going to be around $28,000. So, I just need authorization to sign the updated performance agreement as amended.
Did motion authorize Ms. Armstrong to sign that?
Certainly.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got you. Y'all didn't do it.
Missed out all the way around.
Yeah, we get you missed. All fair and open say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And the next thing, I just wanted to mention the Solid Waste Center holiday hours. There is a sign, it's a part of the large sign, I believe, that lists the holidays. The day before a major holiday, the waste nights close at 5:00. So, the state holidays for Christmas is December 24th and 25th. So, the solid waste, if you want to keep the solid waste centers open on Christmas Eve until 8:00. Or do you, well, I guess they would close at 5:00 on Christmas Eve because it's the day before a major holiday. And the same for New Year's Eve, they would close at 5:00. So, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. We did that for Thanksgiving. I didn't receive many calls. I don't know if y'all did or not about them closing at 5:00. But it is posted on the, on the sites.
So, it closes at 5:00 on the 24th?
Right. On Christmas Eve, they will close at 5:00.
And the 31st of January, they close at 5:00?
31st of December.
Right. How many December?
They'll close at 5:00.
We don't need to vote on that, do we?
No.
One thing that I obviously can hear about what we decided to do, because in February 1st on these changing hours and stuff, and a lot of people calling and complaining about it. I thought it was something kind of talking kind. We want to hear from you. So, anyway.
I thought someone coming because I've seen a lot of calls and people upset about the hours.
They're going to replace us all.
That's what I've heard.
They're going to replace us all.
That's what I've heard.
Replace us all. Yeah, I heard that too. This is listed, Bill Dangus said, this has been the hottest topic that I've ever dealt with since I've been elected in 2012. You know, the dumpsters. And you cannot put a schedule in place that will fit everybody. So, I don't know. But we do the best we can. And I know it's inconvenient. I'd even recommend it. I use a truck service, $25 a month, and this is the best $25 I ever spent. But anyway, I can keep up the hourly salary. But anyway, it's, they do great. And my pleasure, maybe it's a kind of, but.
I think it's important to reiterate the reason why, you know, it's being done. That's, most of the calls that I've got, that's what they're asking, you know, why we're going to that. And we've had several committee meetings. That's been discussed many times over. And so, there's a lot of heavy items that are going into the trash bins. And those trucks are not, you know, and the heavy items, many of those are like transmissions and engines and heavy metal and things like that. And they just play havoc on those trucks that we use. And all three of them, we have three, and three have been out of commission several times at the same time. And that's just, you know, logistically, that's not good. We don't have, and then you have to go buy or rent another truck. And, you know, in the meantime, then have that one or two trucks, you know, working two or three shifts. I mean, you know, to kind of act the back to try to keep things caught up. So, something has to be done. I think it's important to reiterate the reason why that we're doing it and the importance of it. And the trash situation is not getting any better. It's only getting worse. And you have a lot of other situations that are happening too, and that's called dumpster divers. That's just not a good thing to do.
You're supposed to do that?
No, I don't think so.
No, I'm teasing.
I've never been caught doing that.
You've been caught.
No, I don't. I've done that. I don't do that.
Most of the people that has come even when you explain, it takes a while to go through that and they understand. They said, well, you're punishing everybody for the action of a few, and that's just the way it is. I mean, you've got limits and speed limits and stuff. Everybody ain't going to run 70, but there's some will. So, you put signs at 55 or whatever. And you hate to punish everybody. It's not, that's not the intent. You know, it's just to try to get where we can manage this. And Bill, he's had, ever since I've been around, Bill, he's had to deal with this. It's been tough to deal with. And but once you explain it, most people understand. They understand why we're doing it. But they was hoping there'd be some way, the biggest thing, the hours, they close the same time every day, so they get used to it every day. You know, so y'all look and see for what, how much time to close on Saturday compared to close on Friday or at 4:00 on Thursday, whatever. And I, obviously, would be hard to do. But anyway, those three levels that we set, I mean, once they're posted, get used to it. Hopefully, people will know just when they can and cannot go.
And we don't like it any more than you do. None of us do. And so, logistically, again, with some of the sites that are smaller and they don't have that much trash to pick up, then it just doesn't make sense to keep those open for a lot of, you know, longer hours. So, we just have, we'll have to learn to deal with it, tailor it, schedule it, and go with it. And then we'll try to adjust and re-aim or whatever we need to do, or repunt or whatever. I guess one of the big things that I discussed with a couple of people before this meeting was, and you're right, Danny, this is the topic that we talk about the most, it seems like, and is our trash. But the day workers, I guess, some work 12 hours, some maybe work eight hours. Bill brought to my point that even some of the people that work 12 hours, they only work four days a week. Some maybe work a lumber. I don't know. But I think some of those people are not having, have expressed that they don't have time either before or after to be able to drop their trash off. And I think that's probably one of the biggest areas that we might have to take a look at. Kind of re-aim, readjust if we need to, possibly. I don't know.
There is one that, there is one day at every site that's open until 8:00.
I was thinking, I wrote it down.
Sorry.
I think on
Most sites, it's Thursday.
Yes.
Up until 8:00. There's a few that's on Wednesday. Just because of staffing.
So, I just had to jot it and note it down. Maybe a possibility of pulling an hour back on Thursday until 7:00 or something. And then maybe add the hour or two on another day or Saturday, extend it if needed to, to 6:00 or 7:00. That's what I had kind of come up with.
We voted on that, didn't we, too, to go with that?
We did vote on it. That's the biggest complaint I have gotten is
Right.
People are saying you've not set the schedule for people who work. And I've apologized. I said, I think we had one board member who voted against the schedule and I wish I had because I didn't look at the whole picture. I'm, you know, I'm retired, so it didn't matter to me. But I should have thought about people who work. And if they work in Kingsport, you know, they may leave earlier than it opens in the morning. And if they work like 12 hours, they may get back. It's already closed. So, you know, that was something that I didn't even think about. And I learned a lesson from that. Anything that I vote on in the future, I will look at it from every aspect. But I can say this too. I think waste management is a great free service. And I appreciate it. I pay for my trash to be picked up. For most of mine, I don't want them until I move back to Scott County. And I just think it's a, it's a nice free service that we have.
All right.
And so, we shouldn't ruin that opportunity, you know. I appreciate, you know, you saying that. So, we, we as citizens, we shouldn't ruin that, you know, for us. Meaning, don't abuse, you know, what you know better than to do, you know, so. Because that's what's causing us problems and that's why we're, you know, having to do what we've got to do.
Well, as we progress with surveillance capability, then maybe they at some point can be open all the time. If we can, you know, if the sites can be watched and we know what's going on there at all times, then, you know, maybe we can go with something else.
Yeah, I thought about that too, but it's hard to get a camera to see what somebody's throwing at the truck. I mean, you can see if it was coming in or the other, license plate before is a camera on each vehicle. If you've got seven or eight dumpsters there, it had to have one on each one to see what they're throwing in there. It would be hard to do, but you could see it was coming in and out throughout the state or something. But even throughout the county, you would know with the camera. And a lot of people's assets, you can survive with cameras, but it'd be very limited what you could do with it. Unless you have one on each, on his vehicle and back then, so.
Since we're on waste management, Duffield, there's a big hole there. It keeps coming into existence. I don't know how. I have ready mix in my garage and I've been thinking about concreting that big hole. I don't know why it happens. I mean, it'll be filled up with gravel and then in no time for it, it's a big hole there again.
A lot of that's caused by the trucks. The air bleeds off, blows the gravel and makes a spot in the parking lots of the dumpster trucks. Air will bleed off and blow and it blows the gravel.
Well, I notice it when I go because I have to be careful too. And there's really not much room to get around it. And if nobody's coming in, you can get over, you know, come at the left to go out the gate. But if someone's there coming in, I mean, you either have to wait, or I do because there's not much space on the side of that big hole.
So, it's not next to the dumpsters. It's next to the gate.
Right. Just a big hole that just comes
Well, you look at that.
Into existence.
Oh, look at that. We gravelled that site not long ago.
I know, and I really appreciate it because the hole is so big. And every time I go, I think, I mean, I'm a great concrete finisher. And I think I got ready mix in my garage, but when can I do it? Because people would love my, my work.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, there's a solution.
Anything else, Ms. Armstrong?
Yeah, I have one more thing. Usually at the end of December, an employee per the personnel policy has so much vacation they're allowed to carry over. I'm requesting that that be extended by five days this year because of the COVID situation and employees' increased workload and their inability to be able to take the time off for vacation and other things. So, for hybrid employees, that would be, instead of carrying over 15 days of annual leave, they would be able to carry over 20. And for Plan 1 and 2 V R S employees, instead of carrying over 30, they'd be able to carry over 35.
Boss Martin, we had to move until January the 9th to use our days. Is that the way it is in the county?
December 31st.
Okay, almost different, but a state employee, I guess it's different, but it was, you could get up until January the 9th.
And I'm asking that those additional days have to be used by June 30th, 2021. So that they're not all banked till the end of next year.
I think, with everything going on, whatever we need to do to
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Make it, make things work. I mean, that's what we need to do now. So, need a motion to do that, to, it's just a one-time thing, not something permanent, but for this year. Make a motion. All right. Ms. Kedley made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second. End discussion. You didn't want to say that. COVID in my ear. All right. Anyway, have a motion, second. All fair and open say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, item 24. Mr. Dishman is here.
Paulie's going to know about, you know, his special thank you. And I know we haven't time for remarks. I just want to say lots on the night. You know, Fredo was talking about the county employees working, you know, overtime. And I, and, you know, we just need to say a special thank you. We've had some offices, you know, been closed, but the county's been open and been a business and been working hard. And so, we just need to thank, you know, our county employees.
Probably the water department too, though.
Yeah.
Right.
All right. Thanks, sir. Mr. Dish.
Hey, everybody.
All right. I still say warning of three minutes to be active.
Yeah, well, yeah. I'll say good afternoon here in a second. Hello. How's everybody? You have your construction project report in your packet. Do they do the
They're white on you.
Okay, good, good. Well, I won't read that to you because I can't because I don't have it. But go over it. And please invite me and ask me any questions about that or anything else, of course. But some projects that are ongoing right now, dang, even sewer is still under construction. It's been slow going since it started a little over a year ago. They're making progress. We'll have that completed in 2021. First half of the year, we expect by spring. And then there's the Duffield wastewater treatment plant improvement project that is completed. The Fairview Water Project, which contracts, contract two is, contract one is completed. And contract two, the first part was completed and they had a change where they were, we were able to add several lines along, which was part of what was going to be Phase Two. We complete, we're working on those. It should be completed in the next few weeks. And then there is the sewer project that we've got funded for, for U-Mark and Hiltons that is in design. Some, a lot of it's designed, a lot of it we're waiting on easements. It's difficult sometimes to get easements for sewer projects. A lot harder than sewer, water projects. But we're working on that. Robinet Valley, we crossed one of the environmental hurdles and got our permit. And we'll be starting Robinet Valley and Hunter Valley West in '21. Finished some, a small water line extension north of Duckfield, Steepfield Drive. We're starting on a project next to Gaswell Road. Included in that project is a water line for King's Hall Lane and Alley Valley. We're receiving water line replacement, Phase One and Two. We've worked on that, completed part of that. part of that, completed Phase One. That's replacing old Gowan eyes line, 50 years old, it's leaking or bad. And we've got, our crew got that, it was a PSA crew project, got that done. Let's see, our sustainability project, it's got a lot of different facets, plant and adding a well at National Tunnel Park, we're, got part of that done, the part that our crew constructed and we'll be doing the rest next year. Nicholsville Water Improvement Project, Nicholsville Wastewater Improvement Project. Parts of those have been done, but the majority of them will be done in 21. Central Scott Water Project, a huge water project that will, is going to serve the eastern and central parts of the county. We're trying to get across an environmental hurdle with the permanent application through the core engineers and we made progress on that. And we think we'll be able to submit our engineering report to rural development in the next six weeks and, no, two months, sorry. And then get, be eligible for funding. The PER, the environmental report is, is basically the funding application and we'll be waiting on a funding offer on that big water project. You gonna miss anything?
Nipple oil?
That's it.
Yeah, I said, sorry.
Yes. But we've done part of the water treatment project, part of the sewer, small parts, and we're going to be doing, doing the rest of the, so we're upgrading the sewer's treatment plant in Nicholsville. We had to upgrade the light disinfection with, go ahead and do that. That had totally failed. And so the engineers are working on the plans for the rest of the improvement project.
You probably touched on, did you re-flare fire for misheard, I guess, for the Fairview of the Phase Two there?
Well, you know, I probably had referred to as Phase Two incorrectly, but it's, it's really Phase One, contracts one and two. And then we get a change order in contract, contract two that added some extra lines that would have been what we call Phase Two.
But they're working on Phase Two down there. They are working on Phase Two?
It's not Phase Two. It's, it's still Phase One. There's, there's extra lines on Phase One, yes.
Because I have gotten calls from the people down on Fairview Road that they're working on it and they're very happy that, you know, there's something being done. So that's a good, good report.
Yeah, it's great to get good water.
Absolutely.
Makes people happy.
What about Black Gun?
That one, the Linnawisco put in an application for, to Department of Housing, Community Development for a block grant. And we assisted them and our engineers assisted them and I haven't heard.
Okay, from time to time, Mr. Miller does give me some information. What about, there's federal money for that project because Congressman Griffith's office called me and said there was federal grant money that they have available for the Black Gun people.
I assume that they're talking to the PEC about that and PEC is kind of taking the lead right now on the funding and we've assisted them in that application.
Who is PEC?
The Planting District Committee, Linnawisco Planting District Commission.
Are you working closely with Linnawisco on the Black Gun?
We haven't.
Cliff Mountain?
Well, we, we were, we finished now, we're just waiting on DHCD to review the application.
They had to have that in by the end of October, they haven't heard from it yet?
They got it in.
Yeah, I know they got it in, but they haven't heard back from it.
As far as I know, they haven't. They were the app.
You want to thank Duane on that, if you're going back on that?
We haven't heard. That's a county application.
Okay. But anyway, we're close to with Linnawisco on that and I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Work closely with them on that. Well, they, they weren't real satisfied with some of the things coming to the county on this, on the Black Gun project. So we're, we're closely with them on that. I know you wanted the central sub-funded first.
No, well, we loved that central, but it was, our, the PSA board had considered, it was a pot of money, this is a different pot of money from the Health Department, had considered Black Gun Lane and it's called multi-community projects, Anggood Cooper, Federal Road, Fayon Hollow and Hunter's Valley East. And so we call that multi-communities. Our PSA board directed me and our engineers to apply to VDH to get money for multi-community instead of Black Gun Lane for a number of reasons. That's what I was saying to the PEC that, you know, at that point, my board had, was pursuing funding for this other project and we needed, in addition to the VDH money, we needed Coalfield Water Development Fund money and Linnawisco Southwest Virginia money. That's, so I was acting on behalf of the board. That's, no, Black Gun, we helped them on Black Gun Lane. That's what that's.
Well, their feeling was that you were not.
I don't know.
I know, but I'm telling you, to work closely.
They haven't told me that.
Well, they did me.
Well, I'll talk, I'd be glad to talk to them, but our engineers helped them. We went to a meeting with, and with, with delegate.
But it was like you were bothered by it because of the central water thing was not funded, but the...
Not central.
They speak.
Not central.
But the Black Gun project, you wasn't too fond of it. These people been without water.
For a year now.
Over a year.
We have declared an emergency.
Absolutely.
So I, we're, in this board of supervisors, I'm telling you to work closely with them.
Right. Well, I was acting on behalf of the PSA board and what they had directed me.
PSA board is not a priority of a Black Gun. Is that what you're saying?
For this, for this one pot of money, we had an opportunity to apply to VDH in September for some money. And, and we had two options. One was Black Gun Lane, one was multi-community, those four roads. And our engineers made a presentation. They presented the costs per connection. We could serve twice as many houses in the one project and get a lot less money per connection. So we had samples from those homes. Almost 50% of the homes had E. coli in their water. Their water was not drinkable. So the engineers presented it, you have two options and our board, for that one pot of money, they weren't rejecting Black Gun Lane for, for a project, but it was for that one pot of money, they directed us to apply to VDH for the multi-community and Good Cooper, Fayon Hollow, Hunter's Valley East and Federal Road.
Okay, and I get that.
I only had that one pot of money to deal with. And Central Scott didn't have anything to, you know, to do with that one. We were still wanting money, funding for Central Scott, but that's our rural development, that's a federal, Linnawisco, but it's not involved in the Central Scott project right now.
But that was a pot of money that was available, that we could have used for Black Gun Lane?
Absolutely.
Is that, am I, is that how I hear that? That was a possibility?
There's already 117,000 in that and so.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned that it's not being addressed as heavily and as hard and as advocated for these folks. I mean, yeah, these people on these other roads have, you said E. coli in their water?
Yes, ma'am.
These people on Black Gun don't even have water. That, in my opinion, is a priority.
Right, right.
And I have, I have real...
There were five homes up there, right, and they're, they're all in water, I understand.
They are.
See, there's a problem. I had a lot more homes that, that had E. coli in their water.
They have water.
And so the engineers made a presentation and, you know, the cost per connection on one project was a whole lot less and you could serve a lot more people that needed water, that needed public water for less money. On that one pot, the board selected one over the other.
Can we just back up this in a minute, Mike? Let me get a bottle of water here. No, no, no.
I got a little bit of water.
I, I think, I think at that time, if I remember correctly, because I know we've not really had a board meeting in two, two months, I guess, if that was, so that was September. So at the same time, while what you're discussing, Mike, you know, it looked like the cost was really going to be high and a lot of things, what you were really trying to do. At the same time, the folks were reaching out to Linnawisco. That's when they opened up these other pots of money at the same time. And I think this is where the conflict is, I think this is where the conflict, which Danny's talking about, the chairman. And that, and so you've really got to partner and work together. He's right because, and what he said, that you had went around the director, the chairman of Linnawisco, when you went to the director, and I can't remember the name, I'm not looking at the emails.
No, I, I didn't go around anybody.
It was someone, a director, someone that's involved with the funding and so forth.
Doctor, you know about Donna Stanley? Coalfield Water Development Fund?
I'm not real sure at the moment. I'll have to go back and look at the emails.
Yeah, I didn't go around anybody, yeah.
So that, that's where a lot of the confusion is. And as Daniel was talking about, we just have to be sure that we work together, that we can get the best and most money, you know, for, for whatever the project is, you know, Black Gun and those folks on Cliff Mountain. And as Ms. Kirby was talking about, you know, has declared a state of emergency and that opened up, you know, the possibilities of more funding and so, so they've got more funding and money is coming and it's going to be able to help them and that, that's what it's all about.
Yeah, that's a different pot of money, that's VDHCD, right, right.
One more thing.
I mean, when my board votes one way, I can't go against it.
Reason the board voted that way, oh, is because the engineers said that there was no change of Black Gun getting money.
Right.
Because it's so expensive.
That's what our board, that's what our board was about. And then you got two right here that are sitting on the board.
That's the reason.
I don't remember them ever saying that, but...
Well, they did. That's the reason it went that way, because.
Well, they just needed two options. You could, our board could have selected Black Gun Lane and we would have applied to the Health Department for Black Gun Lane. But the cost per connection was like over twice. You know, you could serve twice as many homes for the same amount of money approximately. So the board elected to go with multi-community. It was, it was an economical thing, feasibility thing. But then...
Did you, did you tell those people not to waste their time to come here and address us? They said that you told them you're wasting your time to come forward to...
Absolutely not.
Well, they all said...
I would never tell someone, talk to someone.
Well, Mike, listen, you should have been here and been an advocate for those people. And for them to come, and they all said the same thing, that they were wasting their time because...
I, if you look back at the minutes, I have been an advocate. I'm the one that brought the problem to the attention of the state.
I know, it's something those...
I'm the one that called Department of Emergency Management about it.
Well, when I get called...
A year ago.
When I get called from Linnawisco.
Trying to get them help. I called DMME, trying to get them help. I told the board supervisors about it. I told our board about it.
Black Gun?
Yes. They called me in December. I immediately called Department of Emergency Management in Richmond. And they told me about a land, possible landslide up there. It's all in the...
I remember that happened, they, DMLR people come out there and look at, see if there was any, or abandoned mine land.
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to...
I remember that happened, yeah.
Talked to DMME, I talked to DMLR folks.
Well, that's like, you know...
I made multiple calls trying to get them to go up there and look at it.
Well, they all said the same thing, that you had told them to waste their time.
I didn't tell the residents not to talk to anybody. I would never.
Did y'all not, did they not?
The first time I heard about it was in August. And I got a call and that, that's what I was told, that you told them not to contact us. And I said, well, you know, he was mistaken because I was on the back for you and I will. And if I need to go before the PSA board, I would be glad.
I would too.
I would be more than happy to present my thanks of compassion over money.
Totally wrong to tell somebody not to talk to anybody and I would never do that. So I don't know what they heard, but I already said that.
I wish you had been there for them because they came here, this was, they said this was their last hope was to get water. This was in July and they were here, their hours left.
They were here in, they called me in August and I told them to come to our next meeting, that we needed to make it public, that everybody needed to know, to get on board, to get these people...
We started, I started working on it in December last year. Our engineers did an engineering estimate in January. Did the Linnawisco engineering on that project to get water to them, so.
Well, I mean, you did recommend to us they should get a system, 200-year-old technology, that's what they needed to do.
As a matter of fact, that's a recommended technology by EPA to get drinking water in a home, to get water in a home. You can look at it, EPA.
Once we got the ball rolling, we got this 117,000 from this Coalfield Water Development fund and hope this DHCD stuff will happen. And so for us to have declared a state of emergency to get the wheels rolling, and I think you should have been the lead on this and you were not, you were not. So you should have taken the lead on this. You should have been here and said, listen, we got people up here off Cliff Mountain that don't have, has zero water. Something's happened. You should have been the advocate for those people. And so I'm telling you that, and as far as the PSA director, you need to really think about this. When I get a call from someone saying that Mike Dishman is not a team player in this and said he's costing the county money, his attitude, he's not grateful, we're funding Cliff Mountain, he, he's upset over this other multi, so you need to be an advocate for these people, Mike.
I think people should have told me instead of telling you. They should have talked to me. I didn't, I've never heard that.
If they didn't?
I've never heard that.
Okay, they all said the same thing.
Well, they should have told me.
I think they, if they, they felt like we're hitting a wall dealing with you. This one says November and they come here, was it?
It's August.
Was August, I can hear from you on August. So anyway, but I'm not here to beat you up, I'm not here to do that, but you understand it's your job. You are working for this county. It's not PSA, it's not...
This thing has made a progression.
PSA is not a profit-making company. It's a part of Scott County.
Right, I mean, it's run by a board and I have to do what my board says. And it was a progressive thing.
Did the board approve you to block the road out here going across the Low Water Bridge? Did the board approve you to take a foot and block that road to keep us from paving it?
I think you addressed that a year ago.
Well, it's good to address, but you don't want to throw stuff out there. So I'm telling you, you, you need to be a team player in all of this. And I don't mean, this may be the wrong place to say this, but you need to understand, these people, I wouldn't, if you've been to their house and visited them, if you've been to talk to them and see what they're doing.
I've been up there.
You've talked to their house and seen what they're dealing with.
I've been by their house.
Oh, I've been by their house. I mean, drive by your house, my, that don't mean a thing. Those people love to hear from you, sit in their living room like we did and she took water to them. That is part of what, to me...
We've gotten water to a lot of people and have been in their homes.
I know you have, and I know you have.
You know, we're, we've got, I don't know how many millions of dollars in funding right now that we're under construction, trying to get water to sewer service to a lot of people. So we're making progress. And I have sent it because, you know, I've tried, been trying to help them since last December.
Good. Glad to hear that.
And...
But I don't want to sit in your minutes where your board authorized you to block that road. I don't want to sit up in your minutes where your board authorized you to do that. Alright.
And they didn't authorize me to block it.
Oh, that's what I thought, but I, that...
They voted.
That's actually, you took outside of your board.
No, I did not.
Anything else?
And I can send you the documentation and you can read it.
Alright. Don't mean to beat you up, but just let your instincts be, you know, I want everybody to hear what I said.
So let me be clear on this. The board knew in December last year that there were six homes in my district who had no water. Is that correct?
Y'all remember that?
Board members, did you know in December that I had six homes that had zero water?
No, they called me in December. I don't know when our board, our engineers started working on it in January, doing a cost test and I do, I do not, no, I don't have a record of all the homes in the county that are out of water, but I suspect there's a lot.
Well, there are many homes in my district that do not have any water at all. I want to know.
Absolutely.
Because I've gone back for them. I've talked to everybody in this nation for these people, Black Gun Lane.
I do not have a record of all the homes that are out of water. I do not have... I do not have, you know, that's not some kind of database that anybody keep. They don't necessarily call me and tell me that they're hauling water. I did know out in Fairview, a lot of people were hauling water from a spring. I hear from a lot of people that their water is not fit to drink, and they haul water. And then we do, we get testing, a lot of people have water contaminated with E. coli, and they, and I hope they're hauling water. But I notified those people, and Andrew Cooper in Thadon, and Under Valley East, and several of those water sample results, and I sent them a brochure from, from the Coal and Coffee Extension Service on what they could do if their water is bad, and informed them that we're still trying to get funding to get them water. But they desperately need water on those four roads, based on those sample results.
Mike, I think in retrospect, and looking back at it, you know, hindsight, but you know, being in the position that you're in, you know, we really have to scope out until ahead. You're a very capable man. I think, you know, looking back at it, I'm not sure if our board knew, and the board's not here, so it's not really fair to say that, you know, there's two of us that are here, that we knew the emergency that it really was, you know, at that time. And, and that should have never been downplayed. And I think that's what the board here, you know, senses, that, that's how it comes, you know, the state of emergency came about, you know, the board supervisors, and when these folks, they just wanted to get help. They started coming out of the woodwork, and they went to, I guess, the news people, they learned about it, and they came up there. And once this thing gets a spotlight, then it's a different story.
Yeah, they were hauling water starting last December, and I guess they came here in August.
Now, as it has been, as has been stated, this has been going on for over a year now.
We hauled them, we hauled, so the fire department, yeah.
And so, I guess they still are, the fire department still hauling water. The fire department is, how about the National Guard, did they ever come forward?
They never did come forth to help. I was hoping they would, because the fire department, I mean, I know it's a burden on them with all their other responsibilities, and I wish the National Guard would step in and help in delivering water.
I think Mike maybe even mentioned this somewhere, it came up in the, in the discussion, you know, winters coming up on us now. I'm not sure how long it's going to be before they do get water. You know, it would have been nice if we could have laid temporary lines there or some kind of a way, and I know that our board, you know, talked about it. I'm not sure about the feasibility of that, but it's not...
Not feasible, just not feasible to lay a lot of... I mean, it's going to be a long time. They haven't got the funding yet. We're, we're waiting on D H C D to review or approve the application, and then when it all, the environmental stuff, it just takes a long, you all know how long it takes to do a project, to get everything approved, and, and it's, it's not a quick fix.
Is it, I'm not sure if this is the right, for our board here, if it's the place to address this, but I think there would have been some discussion about something temporary, some kind of a way. Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure if another well would work, or someplace closer...
Well, I recommend it's fixed, when we recommended this, and nobody was interested, is to, see, there's twenty-some wells up there. Five of them are six now. I'm not sure if five are bad. Our engineers, I recommended drilling another well. They could get money, they could do that quickly. They could tie on, they, you know, for, they'll take a small amount of money, drill a well and see if they get it, because there are good wells up there. Nobody's interested in doing that.
Maybe that's what I heard.
I mean, it's going to be three or four years before it's water project time.
Let's hope, let's hope, let's hope it turns out...
I'm basing that on the history of projects over the last 20 years. It's just, you know, I could tell you a year, but they ain't, they ain't going to happen.
Let's not say this is not going to happen.
A well has...
There's already been a state of emergency declared on this situation.
That doesn't speed up these federal agencies.
Be careful with that.
Well, a well has the potential to be a really quick fix.
This project should be a number-one priority. It should drop everything else.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Start working on the paperwork, whatever it takes to get the money, to get the plans done. This should be a number-one priority, because these other people has water, they can use it for commode, take a bath, whatever, and then they have to do. But these water people has no water whatsoever. So this should be the number-one priority of your engineers. They should be working on this nonstop, is the way I see it now.
But they've already done the preliminary, they don't have the money yet, so they don't have the money yet.
So once, once you get the money, is that the plan?
But once a project gets funded, they go to design, they go to...
How much money do you want to have tax for this project?
It was...
About $700,000, wasn't it?
I think it was $600,000 or something. And I was just...
Sir, I got an email from Duane on November 12th. It says, please find the tax on Lenoir-Wisco, 2021 G A Construction Fund, $265,000, that's in addition to $117,000.
That money's coming directly from Lenoir-Wisco.
That's why I say, that's what they were, that was, they were going to build that engine, so we're talking about now, you know, it's 382,000.
Yeah, mine is Coalfields.
Yeah, $170,000 plus $260,500 from Lenoir-Wisco.
Yeah, and they got to have the D H C D money.
Well, P S A would be collecting the bills, can P S A throw any money in our booth? Do they have anything they can throw in to, to add to that?
That would be, to the board, I don't know.
Have you proposed that to your board? To do any funding at all, so the P S A lawyers can get...
What they could provide would be a drop in the bucket.
I know.
No, I haven't proposed it.
Something about, I mean, I'm on the P S A board, you guys know what's going on, and I don't. But anyway, but it's $265,000 plus $117,000, so we're more than halfway there to get what's needed. That email was November, did you get, did you get a copy of that email on November 12th from Duane?
I don't remember it.
Anyway, that much, so we're up to 200 and 382,000.
I talked to them on October 27th, which was, I don't remember, I've seen anything since then.
Okay. All right. On a, on a different note, Bill, on a... Nicholsville's well pleased with how you all are handling everything, you know, when they have problems, they're right there to fix it and everything. I think you've been contacted by Mr. Skeens, Eddie Skeens, on your board, about the problem that they had at the Mason's Lodge?
Well, I talked to Eddie.
Okay.
I talked to the group also.
Okay.
Dealing with that.
Yeah. Of course, they had a major water leak. They had, their spigot in one of their rooms exploded. They said it came off of something that's forced it, knocked the drop ceiling out of the, out of their lodge, wherever they said, I'd not been in there to see it. Anyway, it's basically ruined their lodge. They, they had some changes of members with their secretary or treasurer or something like that.
Correct.
And when, when they, they were being sent a bill, but maybe it was being sent to someone else or sent, so they didn't pay a bill for, I think it was over a year, I think, maybe closer to two years. I can't remember the actual numbers, but anyway. They ended up, I think you did relieve the late, late fees, the P S A did relieve that, and they, they were very appreciative. They went ahead and paid whatever it was, it's over $1,000. But the water leak happened, and that's a, that was a separate issue. I think it was over $1,000, but you did adjust that to like 400 and something, and they, they're, they're greatly appreciative. But my question is, you know, they went for whatever the time period was, I, I'm pretty sure it's over a year, maybe, and like I said, closer to two years, I can't remember, of not paying a bill. Why wasn't their water turned off?
It could have been part of that time that we weren't the owner, but...
And, and too, is there a way, you know, when that spigot blowed up, you know, they only, they had, they had a meeting like once a month, I guess, and there was just a handful of men, tens of those meetings, I think. But, you know, they don't use all that much water.
No.
But when that thing blowed up, is there not a way to tell that this certain place is using more water than normal?
Well, we read the meters, the radio read meters, and we read them once a month. The only way to tell, you know, instantaneously, is if we had an A M I system where those meters were connected to the internet, or, or wireless system, and that, we don't have that system, we don't have the terrain, so it's, it's a monthly thing. We did our, our normal leak adjustment, and we weighed the penalties, and, and we're going to put them, I think, I guess they're not going to be using the building, they're going to be renovating the building when we...
They're actually probably going to tear the building down.
Okay, we're going to put the account on location, so they won't have any, any bills.
Well, but they're being, they have a welcome to stay on what we was talking about. My, the, why wasn't their water turned off when they didn't pay a bill? I mean, I, I know that's odd maybe to say, you know, nobody wants their water to turn off. But if they didn't pay a bill in over a year, maybe in two years...
I, I don't know the details of the timing and about disconnect. I'll have to see why they can make it onto a disconnect list.
Okay.
We're pretty diligent about, we sort y'all on a disconnect list, but...
If, if their water had been turned off, then the time that this thing exploded, it wouldn't have, their water been turned off. So you want, that's what I was sort of getting at. Another question that they brought up, since they are, they're, they're probably going to have to disconnect their water, and disconnect, I guess, their sewer too. Is there a, what's the charge for them to do that?
Well, we're putting them on this vacation status, and they don't have a bill.
They won't have a charge on that, okay.
I think we, we already done that, we did that this week.
But if, if you could check on, you know, why, why maybe they didn't...
The timing of the, being behind in the disconnect, I can't remember.
Okay. But when y'all have another meeting, you know, care to sort of...
I would say we treat them just like we treat every other customer.
Well, I mean, you know, it was part, you know, they didn't go in there, they weren't able to have meetings. They didn't go into the building, which they probably should have. But they had to pay the bill in over a year, to me, their water should have been turned off anyway, so. But anyway, if, if y'all could...
In Nicholsville...
And I guess what you're saying, if they didn't, if the water been cut off, they wouldn't have had a great bill, like what they said about...
You know, it's been a transition in Nicholsville, and so we try to work with those people as much as we can.
The mayor himself, he, he's well pleased, you know, with, if something happens, you all are there.
Great folks up there, it's been challenging, but it's been a good experience.
But anyway, you could sort of look into that.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
Any other issues or questions about projects or future projects?
Do you have, you have the projects or future projects on your website, do you?
Yeah, I need to update that, it's been a little bit, but I need to update, I usually update after I've talked to you all.
Okay.
It's on there now. Current and future projects, it's under news and notices.
Okay. All right. Where's that you got?
Now, the most important thing. No, no, I'm just joking, but it is important. Mr. Claus?
They have a copy on your tablet.
We do, we do. It's a...
They're going to present it at the P S A. From what Mike had told me, they're wanting to present this at the P S A meeting, so they're just...
Yeah.
Your authorization, approval, blessing.
Yeah, I got it, it's here, I couldn't, what this is, do I need to say what it is?
Go ahead, yes.
Does he know?
He knows. I read it yesterday, we have a send-off form in the office with a few people.
Basically, it's, it's a proclamation of appreciation. Dan Anthony Claus, and he retired December the first, 47 years.
Amazing.
So anyway, the resolution, that you can see there, I'm not going to read all of it. The last parts of the article will be resolved, that the Scott County Board Supervisor does hereby present. Dan Anthony Claus, his proclamation of appreciation on his, on this second date, December 2020, that it's, I understand they're about what he's done, what he's done, and the 40 years, 47 years of service is very commendable. So they've authorized that, to do that, and we appreciate, so you want to present to Metro?
Yeah, I couldn't get him here. I think I'll be, might be able to give you...
I like to be, maybe at least a picture, maybe the camera.
Maybe at least a year next week, if I can get Dan here. And Dan is, I mean, I think I said an intense work ethic, and that's probably an understatement. For, for many years, up until the last couple of years, Dana was the only, was brought to my attention, and we made a change. Dana was the only person at the P S A that was on the call 24/7. So at night, and on the weekends and holidays, if there was an emergency, he was the man that got the call. Last couple of years, we put a couple of other people on that list, and they rotate, but it's just, he's made the P S A. The P S A has been successful, and has due, a whole lot due to Dana's efforts. He was at D D A, Department of Development Authority, and Bruce Robinett, if you know Bruce, Bruce molded Dana, and Dana was still, he's who he is because Bruce Robinett. But he's done everything, and ended up as our operations manager over all outside activities. Just a great guy to work with, very impressive.
Yeah, that's great. Anyway, Will, intend a motion to approve this proclamation of appreciation for Dan Anthony Claus. We have a motion to the...
I like that motion, Mr. Chairman.
It's a tip, made a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
It stood at second. On the very bottom, saying I, I oppose the motion, carry it, so you can do that, and...
And I hope you're feeling better.
I am. I, I said, we had this meeting last week, I probably didn't have done it, but I had, since Friday, I felt very...
Took me, I...
Did you have it too?
I did, I didn't have respiratory, though. It took me about three weeks to get my strength back.
Well, I've been a month, and I, I'm, I'm working on it. I can go steps, I'm going to take the elevator, I want to go the steps and maybe some...
Yeah, I'm glad you're better.
What about your taste and smell to it?
I lost it a little bit, a little bit, not bad.
Well, something good come out of this for me. I don't like sweets, I don't want sweets. And I, I love a Coke, and I, I don't, I don't desire a Coke at all.
Yeah, well...
Mike, you did the...
I lost weight, that was...
Lost 15 pounds, but appreciate you, you took the beating pretty good today, appreciate you, Kevin.
Well, somebody was, you going to stop that, somebody emailed it to me or something?
Yeah, we'll get him a copy to stop.
All right. Thank you.
Y'all have a Merry Christmas, and hope to see you next year.
Thank you, sir.
Merry Christmas.
All right. Now, to where we, the comments, requests, recommendations on the board. Mr. Jigger, do you have anything?
Yeah, I've got a couple of little things. I got a call about the bridge, and I'll answer the phone, but there ain't nothing we can do about it. I just wanted to make sure, this lady called me, said she called 50 times, they wouldn't answer the phone. That's nothing unusual from what I hear. And she was real upset about it. Said she finally put her clothes on, came up here, and when she got up here, she hit her phone to dial it, and said she couldn't even hear it ring, maybe it was all sitting
And said she couldn't even hear it ring, maybe it was all sitting out there at the desk, so. It's not good when people want to pay their taxes and they won't answer the phone to do it, but she don't work for us, so ain't much we can do about it. And the other thing I've got is, I know I almost get more calls about these chickens. What am I going to tell these people?
Are there any laws in Virginia about raising piping roosters? I mean, if that could.
You can have, but you can't fight.
I know you can't fight them, but can you sell them?
Yeah.
I mean, can you raise piping roosters in the state of Virginia?
Carl Sanders says you can't.
For sale for that purpose, I mean, you know, that's.
Still legal in Kentucky?
I don't know, I believe it is a felony for, is it federal something now?
I don't know, I believe. I was thinking Kentucky it was legal, but they might've changed it, license, whatever.
Piping turkey, or piping chickens. I'm still fighting.
I know when I was on the railroad, we, we load trains over in St. Charles and thoroughfare over there. Sure right there on the Kentucky line, I was always told it was legal to do it in Kentucky, but they are everywhere. You, you can see them by those little blue barrels. They're well, not little, but they're fifty gallon barrels. But I don't know.
They're out your district, I don't want to say it.
Oh, it ain't mine, it's his.
Oh, it's his district. Okay, but just how it's all I know, I don't know.
Is that what you tell me? Tell them to call Marshall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Forget what's out, whatever, whatever help we can do for them, and we're limited, it'll be a civil matter, I think.
I enjoy talking to people, just go ahead and tell them to call me, that's okay.
Anything else, sir?
No, that's all I got.
That's good.
Yeah, I want to thank the, the county, the staff, the Frida, Bill, and the staff here, the news people, Sally. And the cameraman back there, you too. Wish you all a Merry Christmas and I know it'll be different this year for a lot of families and it'll be different for our county. But let's just keep each other and our thoughts and our prayers, that's what the Bible tells us to do. And that's, that's, that's what guides my life and I hope it guides your life. And so thank you all, I appreciate the board members, all of you. I draw inspiration from each one this year and I hope you all do the same for each other. That's what makes a good team, that's what, that's what makes the county a good team. And our county is a great place to live. And I'd say, you know, we shouldn't live in fear, we have this, you know, with the pandemic and the numbers are high. We've had several people that have been affected with it. Brother Danny here is one of those and is close to our families and to end some of our families. And, but to God, good Lord, he'll help us through it. And we're not to live in fear, but we should practice the social distancing. I don't know why I'm saying this or doing this, but you know, we should practice the things that we've been told to do. And that should help, you know, with it, so. So love all of you and you too out there at Scott County.
Mr. Chairman. I think everybody, what they've done throughout the year, you know, we, we said here a year ago, you know, in the audience. And we would have never thought that we would have been faced with what we've been faced with this year. I don't think any of us in, in the world understood what was coming. But it's, it's changed, just like Marshall said, we, we, we can't live in fear. There's going to have to come a point where we overcome this fear, you know, we, we can look to God above for that inspiration.
Right.
So, but anyway, everything's going good. You know, we get fussed at every now and then, but you know, the good always outweighs the bad.
That's right.
You know, so we just need to keep moving forward as a county and we'll work it all out together. We don't have all the interest, but we'll try to do what's best for the county. Hope everybody has a good Christmas and a happy new year.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Ricky.
It's good to have Danny and Stephanie back and the whole group here before Christmas. I'll just take over what everybody, the other three just said, that was, that was exactly what I was thinking, so I don't have a lot to say. Merry Christmas, Stacy.
Absolutely.
I said it.
I already said a lot and still getting pretty, pretty concerned when you mention black, um, way because I just.
We got passionate about this, you, you've been there, you understand what we're having to do.
Absolutely, I've gotten to know those people and, and even before I got to know them. When, when Mr. Bowles called me and said they had not had water since November last year. I just, you know, I put myself in their place and I mean, that is just so bad. I mean, so I have a lot of compassion for those people and I would like, I don't want it to be three years before they get water. I mean, that's just not acceptable. In the twenty-first century, you have to wait three or four years before you have any water? Not acceptable. And then, of course, I already mentioned the Fairview people, they are very appreciative that work is continuing down there. I think their water is contaminated down in Fairview is the reason that they want, you know, the water so badly. And I did attend the virtual Virginia County annual meeting for three days. That was interesting and.
We did.
Lot of love and it was enjoyable and I too wish everyone here and all out there a happy holiday season. And we will see you next year.
Screw it.
I would like to thank everybody that does have a part in making us look good up here. I don't know if that making us look good is the right way to say that, but helping us along the way. Just like you said, Jeremy, last year, sitting on this front row, scared to death, technically speaking. Just watching you all and how you were so cohesive as a group and really hoping that we were going to be, you know, into that. You know, that we would fit into that. I mean, I could see the camaraderie, I guess is the right word, between you all and I really, I really appreciated that. And, you know, this year has been very different as far as, you know, we are drinking from the fire hose a lot of times. But I am so appreciative and I am very thankful for being able to sit on this board with everybody that's here. It is an honor and it is a privilege and that's something that I don't ever want to forget. People call, they have questions, they have concerns, they like to put it out on Facebook if you don't, if they don't like what you're doing. And that's fine, but at the end of the day, you know, I really just want to do what's right for the county. I want to do what's right, I just want to do what's right by you as the citizens. If you have something you, I mean, I do love to talk, I mean, if you all don't know that, I do love to talk. So, I mean, if you've got a question or something that, you know, that I can call me, because I do love to talk. I don't know if I said that enough, but I hope you all have a super duper very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Dana, can I just add one thing?
Yes.
I forgot to mention, and I want to thank the other one here and everyone out there for the many prayers that were for me. My donor T cell's the last report, as, as I reported, I, I put that out there on social media, I have it from the very beginning, that's how people keep up with it. And a lot of people, a lot of prayers, and our last report was seventy, seventy-one or seventy-two.
It's on its way up.
I think it is.
Slowly, but it's going up.
Well, yeah, so it broke out of the mold and it needed to because. I wouldn't be here if it had not be, if it had not gotten out to twenty percent. And that only happened around May. And so we just thank the good Lord for that, for your, your many prayers.
How long were you quarantined? You told me how many days, two, two sets of days you were quarantined when you were in the hospital.
Oh, Lord, I was in the hospital for eighty-four days and I was at Vanderbilt for a hundred and fourteen days. Plus all the other weeks that we had to go for platelets and transfusions, so. I, I always say it this way, you know, with this pandemic and a lot of people feel like they're quarantined right now. I'm used to quarantining, I have been for three years. But I have said, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be real quick, one thing, I got an email from the court clerk, well, Bob Taylor, Friday before Thanksgiving. And the judge, Hamilton, had, they shut the courthouse down and which they were, the, the offices here were scheduled to work four hours on that Wednesday. And he says, you might want to consider that, was another four hours for the county folks. You thought, well, email it, you call you, don't do it on my own, so I contacted Frida about giving them an extra four hours on that Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So they had the whole day off. And she said, well, you can do that, so that's what I did. So I want you all to know, I didn't mean to go outside of what you all would want, talk to some of you about it, didn't have an issue with it. But I thought with what this staff has done, it was commendable to do that. And the governor gave them four hours anyway, and I've worked a half a day before, the governor gave us half a day and really, you're not really productive. So here we're not making hubcaps or something, we're, we're providing a service and so these people, I thought they deserved it. So I authorized the stars to give them that extra four hours leave time on that Wednesday, so they'd have to come in and off for four hours. Let me quickly say this, folks, you all sick in the hospital seven days, do everything you can to keep yourselves safe from this. The mask, I don't know how much it helps, I don't know. It's a reminder, it'll keep you from touching your face and the eyes and stuff, I think, if it does that, but I'm telling you, do everything you can. And we were, our guard got it done a little bit, my wife got it, I got it and laid flat on my back for seven days and couldn't even, they wouldn't let me lay down because of the breathing thing. So I'm telling you, be as careful as you can. About this virus, it's real and I thought I could beat it. I, when I got sick, I got where I couldn't breathe, I had to go, had pneumonia, a lot of things happened, but don't delay treatment. If you get sick and you, and you can't beat it, my wife didn't go, she, three or four days, she was fine. But I'm telling you, be as careful as you can with that because it's a real trend. If I'd had this meeting last week, I could have been here. But since last week, I have tremendously energy, my energy come back and I'm breathing better and so, and I'm telling you, it's a real trend.
It is.
All right, anything else? And Merry Christmas, folks, listen, you all was doing all this, all over the media here, we appreciate what you do, Sally. Dana, all of you, you know, enjoy this Christmas, it's going to be a, a good season. And this year, at the time last year, we sat here, never did we think, we all sat here in December, that we would be going through what we did in two thousand and twenty. And it's the first time ever, I don't know if we had to cancel that board supervisor meetings, first time that I ever known it happened. You all know if it ever happened before? Never, so that's what we had to do because of the office and, or I couldn't have been here, y'all done fine without me, but anyway. Thank you all, Frida, Merry Christmas, all of you. All right, we do have a couple hours for closed session. And we will need a motion here, so we need a motion to go into closed session. We have two items, you have a motion.
How many motions?
On a motion by Mr. Tipton, second by.
Second.
Mr. Ricky, let me put my glasses on. The board hereby enters the closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dice three seven one one, being item A one personnel and item five, A five prospective industry. So, excuse me, so we will be going to closed session with that, all the very bottom, say I. Opposed?